To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Before the meeting is started, Mr. Priest.
I still don't have any audio.
Read our monthly. From the state.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open law. Section 20 and the governor. Fifteenth 2020 order. Strict limitation, the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the town of Burlington, where it's left is being conducted.
I wonder how I changed that, because I.
Nelson's on a phone call and does not realize he's on mute.
There is.
Steve, hear yourself.
Because I've been watching now for quite some time, and I thought maybe Betty didn't let me come in. Okay, but I can't hear you. Oh, the one here? Okay.
I'm gonna give it a minute just to make sure that if he can hear us or not.
Okay, it seems as though he's on mute now. All right, I'll finish reading this while he's. Let me see. This public hearing of the town of Burlington, where it's left is being conducted. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. The public can listen and/or view this meeting while in progress. As broadcast on B C A government cable access television. B C A government coverage Facebook Live page. Or by using the link provided in the agenda for a WebEx virtual online meeting. Or via phone at four zero eight four one eight nine three eight eight. The meet number is one two nine eight nine zero three six zero six. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so. During the portion of the hearing designated for public comment. By commenting on the B C A government coverage or Facebook Live page. The chat function on the WebEx virtual meeting will be a telephone at seven eight one two seven zero one six two five. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson, can you hear us? Apparently you still can't hear us. Well, okay, let me start with this. Tonight's meeting, the first thing on the agenda is a Board of Selectmen and Recreation Commission joint meeting. Betty, does Kevin have to open that meeting, or is it considered open at this point?
We're both going to open. You're gonna open your portion of this joint session. And then Kevin will follow and open it with his board members. And if you want, Kevin, Steve can join or look at Facebook Live, perhaps, and see if there. Just an idea.
Kevin, would you like to open your meeting for us, please?
Yes, but the Recreation Commission opens the meeting at six oh three.
Thank you very much. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna let each proponent. Hi, Steve and Steve, both of yous. The only two applicants we got. So I'm gonna give each one of yous two minutes to have an opening statement. And then at that point, we'll go to questions. I will be calling out questions. Mr. Sullivan will be asking questions for the entire board of recreation. And I will be asking each one of my board members if they have a question. When it's over, the questioning is over. We will go to a vote. The vote is going to be on a roll call vote. One thing I did forget, each question will be altered back and forth. You have to ask the same question to each proponent at this point. Okay? Everybody get that? Okay, good. Gotta go.
All right, so Joe, just, I apologize to interrupt, but we have Steve Nelson. Is he can?
I don't know yet, Kevin. That's what I'm trying to figure out right now.
He was having problems with his audio.
Yeah.
And I don't see if Steve Marquesi is connected yet, the other applicant.
Steve was connected. It's under Sprinkler, or Sprinky.
Oh, Spring, okay.
So that's what he's under right now. Mr. Nelson, can you hear us? Apparently not. Well, I was gonna start with Mr. Nelson, because his application was in first, but at this point, well, he's still working on his. Mr. Marquesi, would you like to have an opening statement of two minutes to explain to the both boards why this position at this time?
I'd like to take the opportunity to say, first of all, thank you very much for considering me for this position. I've, as you know, that I've been part of the town now for many, many years. I've been a town meeting rep for over thirty-five years. I've been on many boards in the town, Ways and Means, as I said, Town Meeting, Capital Budget, so on and so forth. I have worked extensively with, you know, the different departments in the town as a former town employee. As you know, I've donated and contributed a lot to the town of Burlington in the aspect of beautification. You know, donating my services and my time. And as you know, I have knowledge of the workings of the Recreation Department. And when I saw the opening for the Recreation Commission, I thought that it was a great opportunity for me to give back at this time. And that's why I applied for the position. So therefore, like I say, I again thank you very much for this opportunity and hope you'll consider me for the position on the Rec Commission.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate that. Mr. Nelson, are you on board yet?
I can hear you on the phone, Joe. I don't know if you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yep. So at this point, Steve, you have two minutes to have an opening statement.
Okay, I want to take this opportunity also to thank the Board of Selectmen and the Recreation Commission for considering my application. As you all know, I served for twenty-four years on the Burlington School Committee. Prior to that, I served on the Ways and Means Committee and numerous subcommittees over the years. I've always had an interest in the facilities, the recreation facilities and the parks here in Burlington. I played on those fields as a kid growing up. My children played on the fields growing up. My wife taught an art class at the Recreation Commission on Center Street when Don Roberts was the director back then. And I've always just taken a keen interest in it. As a school committee member, I was always concerned about the Recreation Commission warrant articles. I always supported their warrant articles, and in fact, I always felt that they could have been a little more aggressive with some of their warrant articles over the years. But I think we've got an excellent program, and I would really like the opportunity to continue to serve the town and to apply my knowledge and experience towards the issues facing the commission.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you very much. At this point, what we'll do is we'll take questions. I'll start with the Board of Selectmen, and then we'll go back to Recreation Department, back and forth that way there. Mr. Hogan, any questions?
No, no questions. I know both candidates, both of them have made major contributions to the town. It's a tough choice, but I'm all set with questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Mr. Sullivan, question?
Thank you, Chairman Morandi. First question is, how would you explain how you feel your role as a Recreation Commissioner would help in serve the Recreation Department?
Mr. Marquesi?
My feeling would be that with my background in horticulture, my background as a certified irrigation contractor, my background as a certified pesticide applicator, and also being a Massachusetts certified arborist, that a lot of my background would be a tremendous asset to the Recreation Maintenance Division in itself. I also have some knowledge of the Recreation and its recreation programs and how it's worked with the background of having family that has been a major part of the growth of the Rec Department. I feel that I have knowledge that would be able to help advance the department to be as best as it can be.
Listen, same question. Kevin, do you need to repeat it?
Thank you. No, I understand the question. I think that the role of the Recreation Commissioners is to be a strong advocate for the needs of the department. I think that we need to advocate every year for the capital needs of recreation. I think we need to advocate for the staffing needs and for money for the facilities, to maintain our facilities the way I think the town expects them to be maintained. So I think that's what the role is, to be a strong advocate and to make sure that the Recreation Commission doesn't have to withdraw articles, you know, in May because there's pressure. I think that the Recreation Commission should be maybe part of a larger discussion about when we're setting guidelines in the spring, excuse me, in the fall. I think we need to be more actively involved in setting those guidelines and the parameters for warrant articles. And to try to make sure that we pursue the warrant articles and not get pressured into withdrawing them. I've seen that over the years, and I think that I would be a strong advocate for moving forward with capital projects and with increased funding for the commission.
Thank you very much. Mr. Runyon, a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No question, just a statement, you know, along the lines of Selectman Hogan. I know both of the gentlemen, I've known them both each over forty years. We're fortunate to have two excellent candidates for this position. But at this time, I have no questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sullivan, back to you.
Thank you, Chairman Morandi. If you could add a long-range goal for the Recreation Department, what would it be?
That would be for Mr. Marquesi, please.
No, that would be for Mr. Nelson. Mr. Marquesi answered the first question.
Thank you, Joe.
Right? So this will be for Mr. Nelson. Thank you.
Thank you. It's hard to do advocate just for one. I think I'd like to see the town of Burlington fully fund the turf management program. Over the course of the last year or so, Tom Murphy and I have worked as the school subcommittee with Brendan Egan and the turf management company here in Burlington, to see if we can get the schools to adopt a similar program to what the Recreation Commission has adopted. But the program is expensive. It requires a lot of capital needs, a lot of treatment, and a lot of labor. So I'd like to see the town fully fund that, and to keep the playing fields safe and in good condition for the kids. As you all know, the Wildwood Park became overgrown with weeds relatively early on. And then the Recreation Commission responded with a program that worked wonderfully. The weeds are under control, the field is coming back, and I think we need to get the town to buy in and fully fund that. I'd also like to see another dog park in town. I think that the one down at Rahanus is wonderful. I'd like to see the veterans parking lot improved. Very dangerous getting in and out of there from like that for many, many years. So those are three of them I can think of off the top of my head, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you. Mr. Marquesi, same question?
One of the things that I would agree with to a certain extent with Mr. Nelson is just the fact that there has to be improvement in the fields, and I would like to see that done. But I would like to take it one step further than that. What I would like to do instead of farming out our and always looking for the money to hire somebody to go in, you know, take care of these jobs. I would like to, you know, get the staff that we have and impress on them their talents that they have. We have some excellent individuals who have degrees in, you know, landscaping and stuff like that. I would like those people, would like to see them be allowed to exercise their knowledge and have it done in-house as well, you know, to improve the parks. I believe that that should be done. Also, going forward, I would like to continue to see more programs for senior citizens that, you know, they can experience, as you know, that they have a lot of time that they could spend in these parks. So that's what I would like to do going forward.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tegus, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I don't have any questions, but I can't help but echo what Selectman Hogan and Runyon both said. I also know both of these candidates for a long time, and here again, we find ourselves in a similar position where we have two extremely qualified candidates going for the one lone position that we have. And I guess it's a good problem to have, but other than that comment, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, back to you.
Thank you. All right. Can you recommend ways to improve or continue to have good quality programs provided by the Recreation Department?
I would, by providing the programs, that would be, I would go further and ask the public as to specifically what they're looking for, Kevin, and improve on those. One of the things that, that I, you know, like a program, the ceramics program, I heard it's not in effect right now. I mean, obviously with COVID and stuff like that, but I heard it was having some issues even before COVID. So I would like to, you know, get in and see if we can get these better organized. And then as we get responses from the public, move in on those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nelson, same question?
I think that's a difficult question, I think, because the Recreation Department right now offers so many high-quality programs. It's amazing when the brochures go out, and I'm happy that they still do the brochures in addition to the online brochure. When the brochures go out, it never ceases to amaze me with all of the quality programs that they have. I know that when I was in the school committee, Dr. Conti did a lot of work with outside businesses and tried to get them to offer different programs for students in Burlington. It might be possible to do similar outreach, maybe through the Burlington Chamber of Commerce, to see if there are more people out there that would like to teach programs. And that kind of ties in with what Mr. Marquesi just said. Maybe there'll be people out there that will teach, you know, computer programming or computer classes for people that don't really know too much about computers, things like that. So I think we do a little more outreach through the Burlington Chamber of Commerce and maybe through the schools as well, partnering with the schools to see if we can get more volunteers to put programs together.
Thank you very much. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question kind of alludes back to a question that was asked earlier, but I'll go ahead and ask it anyways, sake of allowing the candidates for any further opportunity. Given the success of the Parks and Recreation Department, and thanks to, and thanks to the Recreation Commission, Brendan Egan and the great staff. You know, we obviously offer a lot of programs and services and activities for the residents to take in. Could each of you please kind of elaborate on maybe one or two big picture ideas that you think the Recreation Commission could begin to tackle in the future that, you know, might continue to bolster that success?
Mr. Nelson?
I'm not sure if you're talking about programming risk or capital, but when I think about capital, I meant a few things earlier. But we did the brushfield over where the old football field used to be, and we put in the artificial turf and a nice new track over there, and the facility is beautiful. But I understand that the other side of that field frequently is not usable because of the issues with the water and things of that nature. So that might be one area I would look at, maybe to see if we can get the town to improve the other side of brushfield. It is a big picture item. I'm always, I'm always interested in access. And when I was mentioning veterans park earlier, I think that that's very difficult for people to access that facility with the, with the, you know, small parking lot with one driveway. It's very dangerous getting in and out. So that might be another area where we would like to look at, making sure that all of these facilities are easily accessed by everyone. And, you know, the other issue I think is, as I said earlier, in terms of maintenance. Mr. Marquesi was talking about doing things in-house. If we're gonna do them in-house, we need the staffing to do it. I mean, I think that the staff at the Recreation Department does a tremendous job, but there's only so much they can do. There's an awful lot that they have to manage right now, particularly with the Mary comes park coming on line and just a tremendous amount of work that they have to do. So if we can, if we can get a consensus to expanding the staff, I don't have any opposition to doing things like that in-house either. But sometimes if you go, it could be a little bit more effective. You don't, you don't need to have people on staff the entire, the entire fifty-two weeks of the year. So you have to, you have to strike a balance.
Thank you. Mr. Marquesi, same question?
As far as the Recreation Director's position and the programs, as Mr. Nelson has alluded to, there is a tremendous amount of programs that come out in the brochure, and there are a lot of different programs that these people, the people that residents of Burlington can take advantage of. As far as going forward, of course, you would have to look at and listen to the staff and listen to what the residents are requesting for programs, to increase the programs. As far as recreation maintenance and maintenance of the parks and stuff like that, again, going forward, I still think that we have some tremendous, tremendously talented individuals and that we should be taking advantage of their knowledge and experience in the field of maintenance and allow them to develop and do things more in-house. I don't necessarily see that it's a staffing issue as opposed to, yes, of course, if, you know, things get bigger and we need more people, then by all means, we should be going after those people. But I think we should be taking advantage of the staff that we have already on board.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, this will be the last question. Do you have one, or are we good?
I think we're good, Chairman Morandi. That, I had ten questions, but they've all been answered in different forms through.
Fantastic. Fantastic. Great. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I'll leave this open right now. Is there anybody from the Rec Department that would like to make a comment before we go into the voting aspect?
This is Commissioner Norton.
Yeah.
So I'd like to just say both, both candidates, before we vote, thank you for stepping up in trying to be a Recreation Commissioner. It's been a great honor to serve on this board and, you know, so we both, same, I've known both of you for a very long time. Both Steve's, I mean, my first job was Steve Marquesi as a young child, a young kid, and Steve's done some legal work for me. So you guys are both great people and good luck with the process.
Thank you, Mr. Norton. Anybody else? Mr. Raymond, Mr. Murphy?
Mr. Raymond, no, I have nothing.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, so at this time, we'll go with the vote. Betty, I know you're still there.
Yes, I am.
I couldn't do this without, I couldn't do this without you. I know that. So now we go, we go to the vote, and at this point, am I going back and forth from the Board of Selectmen to the Rec Department? Or do I ask the Rec Department first?
You can start with either board, Mr. Selectman Chair. I think we've decided that the Board of Selectmen start only because it's their joint meeting.
Okay, so the Selectmen will start. Okay, thank you. And it's a roll call vote, so I'll be calling on everybody. Okay?
Now, is Mr. Murphy here tonight?
Yes, I am.
If it, if it does come down to a tie, then the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen is the tiebreaker, if it comes down to that. Okay? Just so everybody knows what we're doing. Gentlemen, we'll start with the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Hogan?
Mr. Nelson?
That would be Bob Hogan, Steve Nelson.
Oh, I didn't hear him. Did he say that?
Yes, he did.
All right.
David Norton?
Mr.
Go ahead, Chair. Mr. Chairman, you do it.
Thank you. Mr. Runyon?
Steve Nelson?
That's Mike Runyon, Steve Nelson.
Mr. Tegus?
Steve Nelson?
Mr. Tegus, Steve Nelson.
Mr. Priest?
Mr. Nelson?
Mr. Priest, Steve Nelson.
Okay, so that's the Board of Selectmen. Now, I'll go to the Recreation Commission, and we'll start with Mr. Sullivan.
Steve Marquesi?
Mr. Sullivan, Steve Marquesi.
Mr. Norton?
Steve Nelson?
David Norton, Steve Nelson.
Mr. Murphy?
Steve Nelson?
Mr. Murphy, Steve Nelson.
Mr. Raymond?
Steve Nelson?
Mr. Raymond, Steve Nelson.
So that's everybody on the board. I don't need to vote. I would like to say thank you to both the candidates for coming in. Betty, with the final, the final was?
Seven one.
Seven one? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for putting in for this. Recreation Commission, appreciate all the time you do for us. So thank you very much, and good luck, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Opportunity again. I greatly appreciate it. You guys have a wonderful night. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, buddy. Good talking to you. Bye-bye.
All right. Thank you very much, Chairman Morandi, for all your assistance. And do you want the Recreation Commission to stand in and vote in any of your, any other articles or motions?
No, we're, I think, I think you've got enough to handle right now, so you could go to your thing. I think Steve wants to get back in the hanger also.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And I want to thank Betty, because without that, I wouldn't have got it done.
No, no, thank you.
Okay, let's move right along now. Mr. Sagorino, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been here all along, just so everyone knows. Next, the next item up, we have some appointments in our police department. We have Chief Kent here and Deputy Chief Brown with some appointments. These positions will replace officers who have retired. So at this point in the process, I'll turn it over to Chief Kent to give you guys an update on the candidates.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. You're on mute, Chief. Chief Kent?
There we go.
I got you. There we go. Thank you.
Before we get started, I'm gonna ask Deputy Chief Tom Brown just to give us a quick overview of our hiring process so it's clear to whoever we're listening. It's a program that he put together, and I really think it works very well. Tom?
Thank you, Chief. So we came out of civil service back in 2014, and since then, we've been running our own exam. This past September twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, we ran an exam that began at nine o'clock in the morning. We had two hundred thirty-one applicants take the exam. Out of the two hundred thirty-one, we had twenty-four Burlington residents. What happened after the exam is we put all candidates who passed the exam, given a certain threshold, whether they were passed with a proper score, if they were veterans, Burlington residents, or met any other requirements, they were invited to a P A T exam, physical abilities testing. We gave that exam on October nineteenth, and then again on November sixteenth, depending on when we could schedule individual applicants. And from there, we were able to pull in, I believe it was twenty-one applicants to interviews during the week of November twenty-fifth. From the interview panel, we then sent over a number of names to the chief and town administrator's office for interviews. And from that point, we had the four candidates that the chief is going to tell you about tonight. And in addition to going through our internal process, we then had to send them through a medical exam, psychological exam, a state-run through the Human Resource Department, a physical abilities exam, and then another P A T to get into the Lowell Academy, which they are going to be starting on July twenty-seventh for twenty-four.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. So the first candidate, I'm going in alphabetical order.
So the first candidate, I'm going in alphabetical order, that is Melissa Cadet of Malden. She has served as a nine-one-one dispatcher for the town of Arlington since two thousand and seventeen. She has also worked as a security guard at Secure, Secure as Security Services. She holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from UMass Lowell. While at UMass Lowell, she worked for the transportation services through her four years up there as a team coordinator, managing ten to thirteen employees per shift. She's also an EMT and certified in FEMA's Emergency Management Incident Command Certification Systems, ICS, level one hundred, two hundred and seven hundred. I would like to recommend to the town administrator, Melissa Cadet, be appointed police officer for the town of Burlington.
Thank you, Chief. With the chief's recommendation, I appoint Melissa Cadet to the position of patrolman in the Burlington Police Department and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
No move.
Second.
No move by Bob, second by Jimmy. Roll call vote on this, please, gentlemen. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Are you muted?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Miranda, is he yes?
Okay. Candidate number two is Sean McGinn of Haverhill. He's a licensed social worker and has worked for the Department of Children and Families in Massachusetts since September of two thousand and sixteen. Holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Salem State University. While at Salem State, he interned for a year and a half with the Salem Police Detective Unit. I would like to recommend Town Administrator Sean McGinn be appointed police officer.
Thank you. With the chief's recommendation, I appoint Sean McGinn to the position of patrolman in the Burlington Police Department and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
No move.
Second.
No move by Bob, second by Jimmy. I'm sorry about the last one. I didn't ask if there was any conversation. Any comments from anybody before I get into this? Nobody? Okay, we'll just go with the vote. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. Did you receive all those, Betty?
I did. And may I ask Diana and Aleah to please put on mute? Thank you.
All right. Candidate number three is Arice Medico of North Reading. She holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice with a concentration in criminology from Norwich University, where she also minored in philosophy, finishing with a GPA of three point seven. While at Norwich, she was a member of the Corps of Cadets, the Criminal Justice Student Organization, and Alpha Phi Sigma, the National Criminal Justice Honor Society. She was also a reserve police officer in Old Orchard Beach from May of two thousand and eighteen to December of two thousand and nineteen. I would like to recommend Ms. Medico to the town administrator for appointment of police officer.
Gentlemen?
And with the chief's recommendation, I wish to appoint Arice Medico to the position of patrolman in the Burlington Police Department and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
No move. Second.
No move, the second by Bob and Jimmy. Gentlemen, we're gonna roll call vote again. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. There you have it, Betty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Candidate number four is Stan Savage of Everett. He's worked as a court officer for the Chelsea District Court since two thousand and nineteen and prior to that, served as the supervisor of attendance for the city of Everett and the Everett Public Schools for five years. He holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Salem State University, graduating in two thousand and thirteen with a GPA of three point nine. Stan has received numerous specialized trainings from the trial court and he's also practiced martial arts training for the past ten years. I would like to recommend to the town administrator, Stan Savage, be appointed to the position of police officer.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Sagorino?
And with the chief's recommendation, I appoint Stan Savage to the position of patrolman in the Burlington Police Department and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
No move.
Second.
No move. So moved by Bob, second by Priest. Gentlemen, we're gonna roll call vote. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. There you go, Betty.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you very much for going through the whole process and trying to find us the best candidates out there. I think we're finding them.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make one comment about the new process that Deputy Brown talked about and the chief has often talked about. When this was first proposed, there were people who were afraid that the town was looking for an easy way to put on people they know and they like. And that has been farthest from the truth. The chief has, as we've seen in these four and the appointments over the last couple of meetings, I mean, these are bright, dedicated individuals. They're good students. They've had connections to law enforcement in some form. And I'm just so proud that the town of Burlington and through Chief Kent over the years has gone this route, because I think it makes the town of Burlington better. It makes our police department better. And I was just so proud to even have any part of it when the time came. So thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Are there any other comments, gentlemen? Mr. Priest?
No, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Tigas?
Just one quick one.
Totally lost you, Jim. Hello? All right, I got lost. Mr. Runyon, any comments?
No, sir. All set.
All right, thank you. Jim, whatever you said, I'm sure was great, because you were there for the, I mean, God, you were there. Was the tea party going on back then or you just missed that one? All right. Mr. Sagorino, we're gonna move right along.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the next agenda item, we have Deputy Chief Brown here from the Police Department and Chief Kent is here as well. So we can formally recognize the department's reaccreditation by MPAC, the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission. Really is a team effort to do this and I can't thank Deputy Chief Brown and the accreditation team over at the Police Department enough for all their hard work in putting this together. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Deputy Chief Brown, so he can explain to you sort of the benefits of accreditation and the work that gets put into it to make, to continue our police department to be on top of the field.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think I lost a connection. Did you?
You did, but we went right by you. Great. We're on Article ninety-seven now. You can shut off and go to bed. I'm only kidding. Mr. Brown is going to speak on right now. So, Mr. Brown, sir.
Are you muted, Tom? We can't hear you.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I would be remiss if I didn't mention Lieutenant Tim McDonough and Officer Keith Shepherd as being integral parts of the accreditation team. They've been right there helping throughout the whole process. Just to explain a little bit about what accreditation is, if you can just picture, it's basically a commission set up to set up peer review for police departments and it just basically instills best practices in law enforcement. So this in two thousand twenty was our fifth award. Going back to two thousand eight was our first accreditation award and every three years, you were up for reassessment. So this time again was our fifth award. Now, what happens is we have three members of the accreditation assessment team that come in here and they audit your policies and they're able to interview employees here. They interview me. They have access to the chief and every employee and officer in the department. And what they do is they ensure that you've maintained appropriate levels of best practices in two hundred and fifty-seven mandatory standards and then they check against a hundred twenty-five optional. Now, because of the department, our size, out of those hundred twenty-five optional, we only have to meet sixty percent, which would be seventy-five. This year during the assessment, we met over ninety of them. They came in, they assessed us over a three-day period, which was set for January fourteenth through the sixteenth. And luckily, because we had our stuff in order this time, it only took them a day and a half, which has never happened in the time that I've been involved. And I've been involved in accreditation since two thousand and three. We only required two onsite repairs, which basically were typos or to change dates, for instance, and there were no follow-up repairs that had to be forwarded to the committee. So on June fourth, they voted a unanimous reaccreditation for us and we will not be due again until two thousand and twenty-three.
Is that, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, I didn't know if, I didn't know if I lost, lost the auto or you were finished, but that's absolutely incredible. Chief? You're on mute, Chief.
Boy, we're clunky tonight. Sorry about that. If, if I might just add that we're very fortunate. Deputy Chief Brown and his team are so well thought of, particularly Deputy Chief Brown, where they're the ones that other departments call that are going through this process and have questions. So I basically stay out of the way and let them get the job done and they just, again, led by Tommy, do a tremendous job. Very, very proud of the work they've done.
Thank you. Gentlemen, we'll start. Mr. Priest? Any comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, I was on mute. I didn't want to lather on, but no one could hear me. I'll keep this brief. Deputy Chief Brown, Chief Kent, thank you. Obviously, you know, congratulations for the reaccreditation. I, I want to thank you both for cultivating not just a, a well, you know, dressed and well-run police department, police station with some very fine officers, but a smart and proactive police department, you know, that is really thinking about the community, thinking about how you serve the people of Burlington. It means a lot, you know. It could be one thing to just go after accolades and to give awards and on the back by other police officers and other, you know, departments and what have you. But, you know, you go out of your way to, you know, cultivate what I think is a fantastic police force. And so thank you both for, you know, that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Runyon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really, really not surprised to hear of the high marks that we, that we achieved at our police department. You know, we've got a, you know, a highly educated workforce here in Burlington, very fortunate here to have such talents on our police department. So again, congratulations. There's been a long history there of achievements in Burlington Police Department. So congratulations to everyone involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tigas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to concur with the fellow selectmen have said already. I know the police department is both present and past have phenomenal. And I know they got everything in line when it comes to the operational, the administrative, which shows as far as the accreditation, how quick it went this time. But I do have to ask, was, were there any comments about the physical building from the accreditation team?
Yes. There were. If one of them was the smell that was, that was coming up through the second and third floors of the station on day one, when we brought them in for the tour, and some issues of dispatch.
I guess we'll just leave it at that?
Okay.
Gentlemen, I think you're all set, right?
I'm good.
You made your point?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, gentlemen. What can I say? A lot of big smiles going on right now, because we all know what that station needs to do. We're just gonna move right along. Mr. Sagorino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next agenda item, we have Chief Patterson and Assistant Chief Conity from the Fire Department here, once again, to make some appointments for, to cover for some retired firefighters that are retiring. Chief Patterson?
You're on mute, Chief.
Thank.
You're on mute again. Thank you.
How's that? Good?
That's much better.
All right. You'd think we'd get this by now, huh? So as Mr. Sagorino was saying, the Burlington Fire Department currently has three vacancies we're looking to fill. The Fire Department currently falls under civil service. So we requested a civil service list. We were able to obtain that list. Much like our police brothers, we have a similar process. Go through a interview process, which includes two or three emergency medical service-related questions. We do a background interview in which our police detectives assist us. We do a background investigation on each candidate. Each candidate is then, each candidate then must go through a medical evaluation, psychological evaluation, and then they must pass the PAT in order to become a vetted candidate. So tonight, I present three names. I'm gonna take each one of them and briefly discuss. Our candidate number one is Brian B. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy is a Massachusetts native. He currently resides in Thousand Oaks, California. He was a graduate of Medford High School in Massachusetts. He was a member of the New Hampshire Army National Guard, where he served as a healthcare specialist. As a member of the Army National Guard, he was deployed to the Middle East during Operation Enduring Freedom. Back in the States, he graduated from Northeast University's Paramedic Program, which at the time was one of the, not one of, it was the elite program in the States. Currently, Brian is employed as a SET medic and military technical advisor in California, as well as a SERC instructor. Prior to joining the Army National Guard, he was a paramedic at Armstrong Ambulance, as well as the Caldo Ambulance Service, where he served as a field training officer. He is currently a Mass Certified Paramedic. He looks forward to returning to Massachusetts and beginning his firefighting career and once again, living close to the immediate family. I would recommend Brian McCarthy as firefighter/paramedic for the town of Burlington.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. With the chief's recommendation, I appoint Brian McCarthy to the position of firefighter in the Burlington Fire Department. Uh, with the chief's recommendation, I appoint Brian McCarthy to the position of firefighter in the Burlington Fire Department and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
We'll move to the second then. Uh, we need a roll call vote on this, please. Uh, Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. You get that, Betty?
Got it.
Thank you.
Our second candidate, uh, his name is Shane Yandle. Uh, Shane is currently an Everett, Mass resident. He was a graduate of St. Clement High School in Medford, Mass. He's a veteran of the United States Navy. Uh, he was assigned to USS New Hampshire, which was located in Groton, Connecticut. Uh, the USS New Hampshire, uh, was a Navy submarine. Shane was deployed overseas, uh, during his duty to Norway and Scotland. While in the Navy, Shane was trained in basic firefighting, hazmat and security. After being discharged, Shane was employed by the Caldo Ambulance, as well as Armstrong Ambulance, where he worked as an EMP. Shane then took his paramedic program at another elite, uh, program, uh, professional center for medics in Cambridge. He is currently a certified paramedic and works at Armstrong Ambulance. Uh, Shane worked extremely hard to put himself in this position. And I'd like to recommend Shane Yandle for the position of firefighter/paramedic.
With the chief's recommendation, I appoint Shane Yandle to the position of firefighter/paramedic in the Burlington Fire Department and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
Jimmy, a second, okay? Uh, gentlemen, roll call vote once again. Mr. Runyon?
Yep.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan? Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. Thank you.
Let me give this to you. Our third candidate, uh, his name is Zachary Rolfe. Uh, Zachary is an AR MARS, uh, Massachusetts resident. He graduated, he's a graduate of the Parker Charter School in Devon, Mass. He attended Mount Wachusett Community College in Goddard, where he earned his certificate in paramedic technology. Uh, Zachary has been a call firefighter at the AR Fire Department since 2015. Uh, he's also a per diem firefighter EMP in the town of Shirley Fire Department. Uh, background interviews on, uh, on Zachary, uh, both fire chiefs, uh, spoke very highly of Zachary. Zachary currently works at the Caldo Ambulance Service. He's worked at Caldo as both an EMP and most recently as a paramedic. Uh, Zachary comes from a line of firefighters. Um, his father, William Rolfe, is currently a Concord, Massachusetts firefighter. Uh, his grandfather was a volunteer firefighter in Maine. Uh, becoming a career firefighter has been a lifelong goal for Zachary. Um, I'd like to recommend Zachary Rolfe for the position of firefighter/paramedic in the town of Burlington.
Uh, thank you. And with the chief's recommendation, I appoint Zachary Rolfe to the position of firefighter/paramedic in the Burlington Fire Department and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
So move to the second, uh, roll call vote, Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Oh, me? Yes.
That's Mr. Runyon. Mr. Hogan? Okay, thank you. Mr. Runyon said yes. Mr. Miranda, is he yes? I think Betty 500 in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chief Patterson. Nice work. Okay, uh, Mr. Sagorino?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Another appointment and a long night of appointments. Uh, next up, we have our Public Works Director, John Sanchez, here with an appointment in the Water Sewer Division. Uh, this vacancy is due to another pool employee, uh, moving along from their position here with the town. Uh, we have other positions, um, in the, within the public works that we have held off on filling. Um, but this position is one that we need to do right now, uh, due to the critical nature of the work that's being done. And with that, I'll turn it over to John, uh, for an update on the candidate.
Yes, uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, John Sanchez, Public Works Director, here in Burlington. Last week, uh, Pro Baron Water and Sewer Superintendent, I, uh, completed interviews with candidates for this job of water and sewer laborer. After reviewing qualifications and experience, I'm recommending, uh, Nicholas Tricomi for this position. Nick has, uh, actually worked for our Buildings and Cemeteries Division for the last four years, including, uh, stint over the winter time doing some, uh, consensual work for us. Uh, he also works for Shaw's Supermarket as a customer service representative. Uh, Nick, uh, graduate of Burlington High and he's actually a, a Burlington resident as well. He has taken some courses, uh, UMS Lowell, and, uh, we're looking forward to seeing him, uh, joining our ranks here as a full-time, uh, personnel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Uh, thank you, John. Uh, and with John's recommendation, I appoint Nicholas Tricomi to the position of water and sewer laborer in the Burlington Public Works Department and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
So moved. Second.
Hold the second by Jim. Roll call vote again. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda is a yes. 500, Betty?
Got it.
Thank you. Mr. Sanchez, I will be talking about you later on this evening on, uh, on my, uh, chairman's time. So while you're still here, before you hang up, because I know you're not gonna sit around, thank you for everything you're doing down at that DPW site for us. Thank you. I drive by at least once a week, if not a lot more. So I'll get into that later on. I just want to say thank you. Okay?
Thank you, Joe, and thank you, everybody. Good night.
Thank you. Mr. Sagorino?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we have a public hearing, uh, so I would like to ask, uh, Selectman Priest to keep an eye on, uh, Facebook Live. Uh, you can also dial in, um, at the phone number here, 781-270-1635, if you wish to chime in. Uh, so Betty and Nick will be monitoring, uh, social media. I got the phone here, so if anybody does want to participate in this, please do, uh, utilize one of those, uh, methods or, uh, raise your hands here within the, the WebEx room, so the chairman knows that, uh, you wish to speak. Uh, for background information, Mr. Chairman, uh, we have National Grid here for a public hearing for a grant of location to install, uh, 45 feet of gas main along Crawford Road. Uh, this petition has been reviewed by the Engineering Department and they have no concerns, uh, other than that this road was paved in 2018. Uh, and we will require a moratorium fee in order for it to be dug up. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could, uh, ask a board member to read the notice, uh, the public hearing notice, uh, and then if you could please open the public hearing, uh, we can hear from the petitioner, who I believe is here with us. And then we can see if there are any comments from the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tigas? I saw your hand up. Would you like to read that?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Just be with me. It's a little, uh, lengthy here. Uh, so, "Public hearing for the Board of Selectmen, Town of Burlington. Please be advised that the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 20th, 2020, at or after 6:30 PM during a WebEx online meeting. The link to join the meeting is HTTPS, uh, colon slash slash townofberlincolnwebx.com forward slash townofberlincoln forward slash J dot PHP question mark. M T I D equals M V B seven D five B A zero zero seven zero zero D three D seven thirty-seven C four five F C zero six seven F three F A one zero. The meeting number or access code is one two nine eight nine zero three six oh six. W capital B V capital J B capital C capital U D five seven five for Monday, July 20th, 2020, six o'clock PM, or join by phone at one four oh eight four one eight nine three eight eight. United States toll. Join from a video system or application, dial one two nine eight nine oh three six oh six at townofberlincolnwebx.com. You can also dial one seven three dot two four three dot two dot six eight. And that, your meeting number, uh, join use, or you could join using Microsoft Link or Microsoft Skype for Business. You would dial one two nine eight nine oh three six oh six dot townofberlincoln@linkwebx.com to consider a request for approval from Boston Gas doing business as National Grid for the purpose of obtaining a grant of location to install and maintain approximately 45 plus or minus feet of two-inch gas main extension along Crawford Road, Burlington, Mass. Plans for this request may be found on the Board of Selectmen's website, website page at www.burlington.org forward slash town of government, town slash government, slash forward slash public slash hearing slash on slash current slash applications slash being slash considered dot PHP. The Board of Selectmen public hearing notices are printed in the Burlington Daily Times Chronicle and may also be downloaded from the following site, masspublicnotices.org slash search dot A S P X.
I don't know who's gonna say it, but could you repeat that?
Yeah.
Oh my God. Jimmy, thank you. You can have tomorrow off.
I have every day off now.
I know. That's where I was going with that. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Sagorino, where would you like to start with this one? Um, we got the, I have to open the public meeting, I'm sorry. Uh, just generally need a motion to open a public meeting? Motion by Jimmy, second by?
Second.
Nick, Mr. Priest? Public meeting is open. So we'll give it a couple minutes before we do anything.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Ms. Cuddy is here, uh, from National Grid to, uh, to present on this topic and answer any questions at the board behalf.
Thank you. Uh, can we ask questions of her now while, uh, the public meeting is open? Or do we have to close that first?
You may ask her when the public hearing is open.
Okay, so it's open right now.
Yeah.
So we can ask questions. I'll start with, uh, Mr. Hogan. Any questions right now? You're on mute, Bob.
Good right now. I'll, I'll listen to what she has to say.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Priest, any questions or you wanna listen? You're on mute.
I, I, I too would like to just hear everything first and then I might have a question or two.
Well, I'm not gonna go any further. Ms. Cuddy? Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, I just was going to, um, say that thank you for having me here tonight. And I'm here on behalf of Boston Gas doing business as National Grid to request a grant of location for the installation and maintain, maintain of approximately 45 feet of two-inch gas main, um, extending from the existing gas main on Crawford Road to service a resident at number seven Crawford Road.
Great, thank you. Uh, so we'll start with the questioning again. Uh, Mr. Runyon, I see you just jumped on there. Go ahead.
I did, yeah. Um, I just wanted to thank you for not asking me to read that, uh, public notice. Um, but I, I'm all set with, uh, the application down there.
Mr. Tigas, any questions or are you still tongue-tied? You're, you're on mute, Jim. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna skip over Jim. Mr. Priest, any questions?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chairman. Um, this seems like a pretty straightforward, uh, request. Yeah, I, I believe I saw that all the additional roadway repairs were gonna be dealt with. I saw that note from, uh, Mr. Hayes. So if that's the case, then the road will be put back to its current condition. Um, I see no issue with this.
You're right. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
No, Nick kind of beat me to it, but, you know, my concern was, you know, redoing the roadway and that's being taken care of. So I'm all set.
Uh, Mr. Priest, we'll try one more time. Any questions? I mean, uh, Mr. Tigas, sorry.
No questions. My, uh, I froze again, so no questions.
So at this time, uh, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. So any questions for us?
Hold on, Mr. Chairman. Can you just, uh, can you just go to Selectman Priest just to make sure we have nothing on the Facebook Live? Or I have not received any phone calls, uh, with any questions on this.
I don't, I don't, nope. Nothing on Facebook.
No, we're good.
Okay. We're good. Um, so at this point, I take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
So moved and seconded by both of yous, okay? Mr. Tigas, uh, we're gonna roll call vote here, gentlemen. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. 500 in favor. Uh, enjoy the, uh, job. Thank you, Diane.
Thank you. Hold on, hold on. We need a motion. That was to close the public hearing.
Oh, that's right, it was. See, that's why I told you earlier. Good thing you're here.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approved as submitted. I won't read it again.
You sure?
I'm positive.
Kid, I don't mind. I'm not doing anything.
I'm good.
All right, so make one motion, uh, second motion. Mr. Hogan, try this again. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. Okay, Betty, did I do it right this time?
Yes, thank you, Diane. I will send you a letter. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, moving right along.
Excuse me. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, next up, we have a request from the India Association of Greater Boston. Uh, I'm not sure if we have any representatives from, uh, that organization here in the meeting with us. Uh, but I've been working with, uh, Vaishali Gade, who is a resident here in town. Uh, the wish is for the board to make a proclamation in support of the 73rd anniversary of India's independence. Um, and could I please ask a, a board member to please, uh, read, uh, the proclamation, uh, prior to your discussion? I think, uh, Selectman Priest has it, has it available.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Priest? Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so the proclamation reads, uh, as follows. "Whereas India is the largest free democratic country in the world, her beauty and rich cultural heritage is unmatched. And whereas India is the land of Chak, Akbar, Gurunak, Mahatma Gandhi, Mother Teresa, and many others who made the ultimate sacrifice to fight for the freedom and uplifting of their countrymen. And whereas India is a composite civilization, a nation extraordinarily unique as a cultural mosaic of people embracing a prodigious diversity of ethnic groups, religions, languages, customs, traditions, dress manners, food habits, climatic conditions, and natural resources, and yet presenting an underlying unity. Whereas India is a country in short duration since independence that has shown an unsurpassed growth in education, health, agriculture, and technology. And whereas 73 years ago on August 15th, 1947, India gained her independence from 200 years of colonial rule with peaceful civil disobedience and nonviolence. That movement in turn became a new weapon to fight against inequality and injustice in the world. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Burlington, do here by, by proclaim August 15th, 2020 to be India Day and encourage all residents to join the Indian communities to celebrate the 73rd anniversary of India's independence."
Very good, Nick. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate that. Gentlemen, uh, any comments? We'll start with, uh, Mr. Tigas?
Uh, just, uh, again, the Southeast Asian, uh, population is a very big percentage of, of Town of Burlington and this whole area. And I think this is a great way to acknowledge, um, uh, our fellow residents in this town. And, um, again, once, uh, Burlington is diverse in so many ways, um, from its schools to its residents and to its employees. So I think we should take this opportunity to celebrate the diversity and acknowledge, uh, So I think we should take this opportunity to celebrate the diversity and acknowledge, uh, you know, the country of India for their independence. And I'll stop it there.
Thank you. Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also wanted to say that it's, um, it's, as, as we, you know, have just, uh, entered into our two hundred and forty fourth year of independence here in the United States of America. Um, I think it's great that we can take a moment and acknowledge, um, another country, uh, who just only seventy three years ago. Um, you know, sought their independence and their freedom, um, and, and won it. And, um, you know, the, the great strides in, in such a short time that they have taken, um, to, you know, advance their, their society and their people, I think is wonderful and it's great. We take this opportunity to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Runyon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I know what Selectman Tigas mentioned of Burlington being a, a diverse community. Certainly, it certainly is a much more diverse community today than it was fifty years ago. Um, so, you know, pleased to, uh, honor that segment of our population with this proclamation tonight.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hogan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, it, it has been a, an honor to, as, as all the selectmen have, to participate in some of the activities, uh, from the Indian community over the years here in Burlington. Um, I do want to acknowledge one thing, that I am two days older than India is independent. So I congratulate them, uh, for, uh, this, uh, anniversary that they're celebrating. So congratulations.
Well, what can I say? That's quite a long time. So very happy for the Indian population here in Burlington, uh, that we were able to do something for them. Uh, I think that, uh, it's such a diverse like community that we try to do the best we can with everybody. Nick, thank you so much for reading that for me because I would have made some mistakes on some of those names, and I don't think it would have looked good on my end. Uh, so what can I say? But congratulations. And, uh, almost as old as, uh, some of our board members. Imagine that. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Sagorino.
Mr. Chairman, did you guys want to vote on that or?
Oh, yeah, jeez, we have to vote on it. I just thought it was a proclamation. I'm sorry. But we're gonna vote on this.
I'll make a motion that we approve the proclamation.
Second.
You remain the second. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Um, who, uh, okay, we'll start with Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Runyon.
Yes.
Mr. Priest.
Yes.
Mr. Tigas.
Yes.
Mr. Marandi, yes. There you go. Five zero zero. Sorry about that, everybody. I thought it was a proclamation. My bad.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the next agenda item is, uh, relates to a plastic ban, bag ban. Um, as part of phase three, the state's reopening plan, uh, the state rescinded its order, uh, that allowed for the use of plastic bags, even in those communities such as Burlington that had prohibited them. Uh, so as of July tenth, our current bag ban is in effect. I know that we received a couple of emails from the public and that several board members, uh, had had reached out and asked for a discussion on this topic. Uh, so we put this agenda item on just for that discussion. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Selectman Hogan.
I, I just, thank you, Mr. Uh, Sagorino. Uh, I just wanted to make it easy for everybody. Um, we could have ignored it, and Paul being the, uh, uh, plastic bag patrolman just could have said okay to everybody as they called. But if we just did it one time and gave everybody the opportunity for possibly a sixty day opportunity to use up their plastic bags and get their new supply, uh, of, of bags in. Uh, we'd make it a lot easier and clearer. So I just thought we should acknowledge that.
Thank you. Um, gentlemen, any comments on this? Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I also wanted to say that as we move from phase three into phase four in this state. And, you know, uh, with the uncertainties of the fall, I'm absolutely in support of continued use of, uh, you know, some sort of one time, you know, uh, plastic bag use. Um, until, you know, we see if we're either clear out of this or if we wind up having some sort of resurgence. Uh, but, you know, for the safety of the population, I think, less handling of bags, probably better off. So I'm in support of this.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Runyon.
Um, yeah, thanks, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, were you looking for a, a motion to extend the, uh? Plastic bag thing?
Yes. Selectman Runyon, from a, from a technical standpoint, I think what the state, uh, rescinded it, um, that is in effect right now. So I think what we technically be doing, and if I could just, uh, address Selectman Priest's, uh, concerns. Uh, we did receive several emails from residents who, um, did not want the reusable bags used, uh, for the fear of the spread of COVID. Um, I did speak with Susan Luminella from the Board of Health, and from a CDC standpoint, there really is no, uh, very little concern about those bags being a real risk factor and transmitting it. Uh, so from a board of health standpoint, um, reusing the bags as we're required to now, um, is okay. Uh, I do, um, I would liken this more to a situation where of us extending it as opposed to you directing me to, um, allow the, the businesses to use up their plastic bags. Um, instead of, uh, forcing their compliance immediately. So it'll be more, uh, a guidance to me on enforcing the bag by law in terms of extending the date till September thirtieth to give people a break to use, uh, any plastic bags that they had purchased. Uh, we just went through this, uh, when we instituted, uh, the plastic bag ban, and I will tell you, uh, the businesses were overwhelmingly cooperative. We received very few complaints. Uh, there are some, we have a system in place where, uh, if a business has purchased a bunch of plastic bags to deal with the COVID situation, that we could, uh, have them fill out a form. And we've, we've already, uh, gotten accustomed to doing that in this office. So I think from a technical standpoint, I don't, I don't believe we have the authority to extend the ban. Uh, but I think what you'd be doing is sending to me a message that the board is okay with us, uh, allowing the businesses to run out their bag supply, you know, through the end of September.
Thank you, Mr. Sagorino. Uh, I believe that answered the questions from the both of you gentlemen. So Mr. Tigas, anything to add or another question?
Nothing really. I, I think this is a, you know, it's a good idea as well, but no other questions other than that.
All right, thank you very much. Um. My feeling is that I think, Paul, you're right on this one. I think that we should do everything we can to help the businesses out, extend this a little bit longer. It costs them a lot of money. And, you know, months ago when we got rid of the plastic bags and then we had to order them all back again, and they're sitting on the paper bags. And let's face it, there isn't a business in this town that isn't hurting today. So if we can help them out in some way of saving them a little bit of money, especially the bigger stores, you know, uh, I'm all for. So, uh. Do we need to vote on this or this says approval on my? Chart over here.
Yes, I think a vote would be helpful, sir.
Okay, thank you. So I'll need a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we direct the, uh, town administrator to, um, uh, move sixty days up the road for people to utilize, uh, their supplies and to help them out.
And that sixty days brings us to when?
September twentieth.
September twentieth. Okay. All right, um. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second, thank you. Uh, gentlemen, go on a vote. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Marandi, yes. Five zero zero to, um. Move along with this, Paul. Whatever you need to do with it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we received, recently received, uh, next item up is, uh, Purdue Pharma class action lawsuit. Uh, we recently received a notice that the deadline was approaching for the town, uh, to sign on to a class action lawsuit against Purdue Pharma, uh, to recoup costs. Uh, from all the damage that was done by the addictive, uh, qualities of OxyContin. I ran it by town council, and their thought was that there would be no harm in the town signing on to this. Uh, it is low risk for us, and as a community, we have incurred costs, uh, related to assisting, uh, residents, uh, who are dealing with addiction, whether it be ambulance fees, uh, police involvement, social workers. Uh, costs incurred at the school department. Uh, on the flip side, I would suggest to you that it would be a great surprise if we recovered significant amounts of money from this lawsuit. I think we all know from our personal lives that usually the lawyers, uh, pressing the case, I get the majority of any funds, uh, recovered. But I think that anything we are lucky enough to receive at the end, I think that the town could put it to good use. So just asking for the board's, uh, permission to, to sign the town on, uh, to that, uh, lawsuit, as many other communities have done also.
Thank you very much. Uh, gentlemen, comments? Mr. Priest?
Uh, no, sir.
No, sir. Mr. Hogan? No, apparently he's on mute. Um, Mr. Runyon?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we, uh, directly a town administrator to join the lawsuit.
Okay. Mr. Tigas?
May I also recommend that you allow the town administrator to sign any documents with regard to this?
Okay, baby. Yeah, that's great. Uh, okay, so I have a motion for Mike. A motion, uh, second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Tigas? All right, so, um, Betty, in that motion will be, uh, for Mr. Sagorino to sign any letters also, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tigas? Vote.
Uh, oh, uh, yes.
Okay, Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Marandi, yes. There you go. Five zero zero in favor of that. Thank you, Paul. Like, uh, like I thank everybody for getting in on that. We know, we know how it's working, but it ended up with two dollars and thirty seven cents. It's over, but you never know. Just saying, there could be anything.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the next item, four forty six, uh, is getting drawn. Um.
Okay.
So we're up to, uh, item four forty seven, which is, uh, town administrator appointments. Uh, we have some new town administrator appointments, uh, to boards and committees tonight. Uh, Betty had put together significant backup materials within your packet, uh, on these committees. Um, for the town, the new, uh, appointments to the committees, we want to do them individually like we do all the other appointments. Uh, but as we move forward to the reappointments of the committee, we'll be asking you to, uh, take a look at the committees and hold, set aside any of the ones that you wish to speak on. Uh, for the, for the folks that have already been doing that work. So we'll start off with the new appointments. I think Amy Warfield is here, uh, she may want to weigh in on a couple of the items. But, uh, I'll start off with a couple of mine right now and just ask, ask if we can vote them individually. Uh, first appointment, uh, to the town, uh, beautification committee is I wish to appoint Robert Zaccaro to a position on the Burlington Beautification Committee. And ask that the board waive its fifteen day waiting period.
Oh, maybe. Second.
Motion made, second. You agree to roll call vote, Paul, on this, or you?
Uh, yes, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um. Uh, Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Marandi? Yes. What's that, Paul?
Yep, uh, we have, uh, next two, we have, uh, two appointments to the, new appointments to the Disability Access Committee. Uh, so I need to do both of those separate, Mr. Chairman. Uh, wish to appoint, uh, Jack Kuna to a position on the Burlington Disability Access Committee and ask that the board waive its fifteen day waiting period.
I move. Motion moved and seconded?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Marandi, yes.
Okay, next up for the Burlington Disability Access, I wish to appoint, uh, Linda Kuna to a position on the Burlington Disability Access Committee. And ask that the board waive its fifteen day waiting period.
Oh, maybe. Second.
Motion made and seconded? Uh, Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Marandi, yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'm town clerk Amy Warfield, I believe, blew the room. Uh, so next up, I have an appoint, a new appointment to the board of registrars. And I'll also be looking to ask the board to appoint, uh, town poll workers. But before I do that, I'd like to let Amy see if she has anything she wants to add in.
Um, hi, this is Amy. I believe you've gotten the backup on, um, John, um, Strauss. Um, I don't have any other things to say except for he was, um, put forward by the Republican Town Committee to fill a seat, uh, left vacant by one of the Republican members.
Perfect. I have, uh, the information on Mr. Strauss here, and I can make that appointment right now.
Okay.
I wish to appoint John Strauss to a position on the Burlington Board of Registrars and ask that the board waive its fifteen day waiting period.
I move. Second.
Seconded by Nick. Uh, Mr. Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Marandi, yes. There you go. Uh. Real, real quick, Paul, I'm gonna interrupt you a second, but I know we're gonna step this out of order. Happy birthday, Amy.
Oh, thank you, Joe.
Forget ahead. Go ahead, Mrs. Sagorino. I'm sorry.
Uh, Amy, next up, we have the election poll workers. Do you have anything you wanted to, uh, speak to the board about that appointment, that list of appointments?
Um, no, just that, um, uh, you may notice that a number of them seem to be, um, younger. Um, so we do, we were able in June to pull in a lot of, um, our high school and college age, um, people that had worked before. Um, some of them are now in their mid twenties and, uh, we're back and, um, not working. So, um, we're gonna continue to, um, try to staff with, um, a variety of, of generations.
Thank you, Amy. Uh, Mr. Chairman, you'll be happy to know we're gonna do this batch as a group, so I'm gonna refer to the list that's in your packet, because there's about a hundred of them. Um, so I wish to appoint election poll workers as per the attached listing provided by town clerk Amy Warfield. And ask that the board waive the fifteen day waiting period.
Yes. Second.
Motion seconded? Uh, let's go with the, Mike, Mr. Runyon, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Marandi, yes. Mr. Sagorino, I was gonna have Mr. Tigas read those names off. Cause he's very good at that. Right ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would have liked to hear him read all those names off too, but in the essence of saving, saving a little time. Uh, so for this next batch, uh, you have the information in your packet. These are all, um, folks that are already, uh, serving on various boards and committees. And I'll be asking to reappoint them as a list. Um. As I, I guess, as I call out the committees, if anyone wants to hold any of them, please let me know. We could set that one aside. But other, otherwise, we would like to vote all the reappointments as per the attached list like we just did on the poll workers. So, uh, within here, we have, um, reappointing members of the Beautification Committee, Burlington Public Transit, Conservation, Cultural Council. Uh, the DPW Recreation Building Committee, the Housing Partnership, Youth and Family Services Committee. Board of Registrars, Cemetery Oversight Committee, Council on Aging, Disability Access Commission, Historical Commission, and the ISAC Committee. So if any members have any individual questions individually about any of those, please let us know. Uh, we can set those aside for further discussion. Mr. Chairman?
Um, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Priest. I saw your hand too, so go ahead, Mr. Tigas.
Uh, just for the record, I'll abstain from Disabilities Access Commission.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there's two quick things. One, uh, I'll be abstaining from Youth and Family Services, uh, uh, board. The second thing, uh, is that, uh, Amy and I were informed that, uh, Mr. Gerald Rashalt will be moving and no longer a part of the ISAC Committee. So just as a note, um, if we don't want to reappoint him and have him a vacancy here, I guess, just reappoint him in the group and then deal with it later.
Thank you, thank you, Nick. I think, uh, it'd probably be best if we just reappoint him and then, uh, consider it a vacancy, because we, we do have some other vacancies on here, uh, that Betty will be advertising for, so she can do that as a group. So it looks like, um, if, if the board members don't have any, uh, other issues, we, we'll probably need to take a separate vote for disability access, a separate vote for Youth and Family Services, and then we can take the rest as a group. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes. So right now, I'd like to, I'll make a motion on the group except for Youth and Family and Disability. I'd like to have that motion first.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we'll, we vote on all the rest, except those two. I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
I'd like to take, make a motion for Youth and Family Service.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Any second on that?
Second.
Attaboy, Mike. So let's take a vote on this one. Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Abstained.
Hey, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Randy, yes. Betty, did you get that? One abstention? One abstained, I'm sorry.
Got it.
Thank you. Now I'd like to take a motion on the Disability Act. I'd like, make someone a motion on that, please.
I will make that motion.
All right, Mr. Hogan, seconded by Mr. Priest. Mr. Tigges?
Abstained.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Randy? Uh, four zero one, Betty, one abstained, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. That was very nice, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. One, one last batch here, Board of Selectmen reappointments. So similar to the last batch that we did, I guess, there's only three committees listed here, the Audit Committee, the Board of Appeals, and the Northwest Park Housing Committee. So assuming that all the members are in agreement of the folks to be reappointed, I guess we could take them as a group, otherwise we could take them each separately. Whatever, whatever you decide, Mr. Chairman.
I'll ask a quick question right now. Does anybody have an objection to taking this as a group? Mr. Tigges, your hand is up.
I, I'll have to abstain from Board of Appeals.
Okay, so you're abstaining from the Board of Appeals. So only two votes at this point, one for Board of Appeals and one for Audit Committee in Northwest Park. Is everybody okay with that? Are there abstentions left? Okay, so can I have a motion on Audit Committee in Northwest Park, please?
Motion for that.
Motion by Bob, seconded by Nick. Now, on the vote, Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Randy, yes. Well, that's a five zero zero vote. Okay, now I need a motion on Board of Appeals.
I'm moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Uh, we'll start with Mr. Tigges.
Abstained.
Abstained. Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Randy, yes. Okay, thank you. We got that, we got that done. We need a motion for the minutes at this point. Did everybody have a chance to read the minutes? Yes, okay. So I need a motion to accept the minutes. Yeah, it's red. Mr. Runyon, you're on view. There you go.
Okay. You want a motion from me for the minutes?
For me?
I'm looking for. Oh, I'll do that.
Okay. Motion made, seconded by?
Second.
Okay. We'll need a vote on that. Uh, Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Randy, yes. Okay. So those are done. Let's go to Subcommittee Reports. We'll start with Mr. Runyon tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of, couple of notes. I would like to offer my condolences to the, the family of Mr. Paul Gerbrandt. Paul, most of you guys know Paul Gerbrandt. He was the Fire Department for over thirty five years. Really a, a good guy, had the good fortune of, of working with Paul for, for many of those thirty four years that he was with the department. And again, he'll be so impressed, he was a great guy. On a lighter note, I just wanted to point out, I know you guys are aware, but if anybody's listening out there, concerts and movies on the Common are, will continue despite the COVID nineteen. Rec Department has a plan in place to keep people safely distanced. I would urge you to visit their website because there is a pre-registration required for the, those events on the Common. Also like to, it is kind of hot off the press, and Nick will probably elaborate on it a little bit further on his Subcommittee Report. But Melissa had notified us today, we, we were the recipients of two grants for our community economic development programs. And again, like I say, I think Nick, Nick may have a little more information on that for you. So that's, good news again continues to come from Melissa's office, and we thank her for a job well done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr. Priest, why don't we roll right into you right now so you can tell us about this?
Yeah, so just leading off with that, so Melissa had informed Mike and I today, which is great news. These two grants that we received, the first was to support our small businesses challenged by pandemic shutdowns. We were awarded just over a hundred and five thousand dollars in grant funding. And this grant program is meant to grow into businesses with five employees or fewer. The Mass Growth Capital Corporation is going to be administering the grants, and the funding was awarded through the Federal Community Development Block Grant Program. And Melissa's got more information for us on that. We were also awarded the Life Science and Healthcare Training Program Grant. And this was about three hundred and twenty one, a hundred thousand dollars. This was done in conjunction with the town of Bedford. Mass Hire is going to be helping to implement the program, which will aim to subsidize education and training for low to moderate income residents of Burlington and Bedford. The proposed program will invest in our residents, expand our regional workforce, and strengthen the state's healthcare and life science cluster. And so, you know, really the goal is to just get people back to work. You know, this pandemic has affected a lot of folks. And, you know, the efforts that Melissa is doing, obviously clearly in conjunction with towns like Bedford, has been phenomenal. You know, Paul reminded me today that Melissa's like Melissa for six months, three of which have been in, shut down of some kind, and she has not stopped. She, she landed, hit the ground running, and has been working tirelessly, I think, is the only word that I can think of. Well, I'll also say proactively, you know, to really get out in front of these situations and, you know, look for ways to help, you know, businesses and residents like in town. So that was the economic kind of update. The zoning ballot review committee has been meeting consistently, working toward new science guidelines, and hope to have something for September town meeting. ISAC doesn't have too much going on, only because, you know, the main push to town meeting to get the board instated through our bylaws is a success. And now that waits with the Attorney General's Office for final approval. And then ju- just, well, two quick things. One, just a shout out to our Recreation Department. We've been working like crazy in this, you know, as we, as a state work to kind of phase our way into some new normalcy. You know, really making, going above and beyond to make an effort for the residents to, you know, being, enjoying the programs and services that they offer. We had the opportunity, we, we reserved in advance and went down to the waiting pool on Sunday. And everything was, you know, taped off and everyone was well spaced. And, you know, folks were having a great time. So just a huge shout out to the Rec Department and the staff there. Then lastly, just, you know, the weekend was very hot, high, high nineties both days. I think Sunday was a hundred, today very hot, tomorrow very hot, this week, I believe, will continue to coast in the high eighties. You know, keep an eye out for your elderly residents and residents' neighbors, you know, in heat like this. Make sure that you yourself are drinking enough water. You can dehydrate very, very quickly, so just be safe out there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to send congratulations and compliment the Board of Health, the board members, the staff, all the employees over there for the extraordinary work they've been doing for the last six months in providing us with the guidance and the leadership on the coronavirus issue. I know that they are, you know, just twenty four seven, so to speak, on top of all of this and keeping ahead of it. And it's, it's nice to see that, well, having been on the board years ago for about eleven and a half years, I still feel like I'm part of the family, so I'm proud of them for all the work they've done. Also, we went through the list, and I want to remind people, if you really do want to participate on some of the boards and commissions that are, some appointments are available. There's a form that you can get by calling the Selectmen's Office and fill it out. I know Youth and Family Services, they're very important. The Audit Committee, there's a couple. So there are a number of opportunities for people to volunteer, so I would, I would acknowledge that. And I too also want to take the opportunity to congratulate Betty on her thirty ninth birthday again.
Uh, Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good news for the residents, and a long time coming, is the Fire Department is now full-time ALS. The ambulance is staffed by paramedics. And at the paramedic level, they can provide a lot more services than they can at, at the basic level. There's numerous medications they can provide on scene, advanced cardiac treatment they can provide, as well as advanced airway techniques. So it's basically an extension of the emergency room is now on the streets of Burlington. I know Mr. Sagarino worked hard over the years on this. He may want to make a comment on it, but Burlington Fire is now full-time advanced life support or ALS. And we know what we won't experience or should not experience any of the delays that we had when it was outside company providing ALS. We have our own, it's in town, twenty four seven, and that's good news for the residents. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Tigges. I'm going to go real quick, I have a couple of things. First of all, the DPW site that they're building right now with central maintenance, the steel's going up really fast. Pretty sure they'll be pouring the floors pretty soon. I go by once a week to see it, it's a beautiful site, it's going to look fantastic when it's all done. So I just want to commend the, the work that's being done over there from our own guys and from the company we have in there. The other thing, I think, Mr. Priest, you might have forgot about the dog park that started over there. They started digging some holes in the grounds over there to put the cement slabs in, I believe. I don't know if you knew about it, didn't know about it, but I just sort of bring that up sort of later. Not the dog park, why do I say that? The sculpture park. Only because there's a dog going up there first, right?
That's right, yes.
The dog park will be now up there. I knew I'd get it straight sooner.
I completely spaced on that, yes, thank you for reminding.
Yeah. So anyway, so that's going on. I know we have a resident that wants to speak at Citizens Time. So right now, I'm going to go to Mr. Sagarino for a town administrative report, and then we'll go to Citizens Time.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as a reminder to the board, we do have a brief executive session after this meeting. But at first thing I'd like to do is thank you, Selectmen Tigges, for bringing up the ALS. Believe it or not, Fire Department has been running at a paramedic level to just before COVID. So unfortunately, that was a major accomplishment by our Fire Department that sort of got overshadowed by the pandemic. If you, if anybody's interested in sort of understanding a little bit more what it's about, Becat did a very nice special on advanced life support, so you might be able to catch that on their YouTube channel or on, on cable still. But really, a tremendous accomplishment by our department, and we're really proud of what the service we're able to provide with the ALS. Second, I'd like to make a positive comment about a super volunteer that we have over at our Council on Agent, Rose Magliozzi. She's always the volunteer of the year, and she's really going above and beyond to help us out with some of our virtual programming and online programming, and just really helping some of the other seniors sort of navigate through the new virtual world and how we're delivering some programs and services. So just wanted to give a big shout out to Rose, she's amazing. Another point of note for the board is the construction of the sixty one Center Street parking lot is well on the way. So that is, please stop by there, swing through and check it out if you have a chance. It's coming out really nice. That's, project is being overseen by Tim Mizony from our Engineering Department, and they're making tremendous amount of progress. I guess on one level, we're somewhat fortunate that the building's not occupied by the public at this point. It allowed us to do this work without disrupting the, the parking flow. But do, please do stop by there and, and check that out if you have an opportunity. And yes, just, just a reminder, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Ellis has requested to speak at Citizens Time.
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So if there's nothing else, why don't we go right to Citizens Time, and then we'll go to our executive session. Sherry?
Great, I'm out there, can you hear me?
There you go, yep, absolutely.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate the time. I just, real quick, wanted to add my thanks. You guys, you're doing a lot of great work in these challenging times, and a great job to Melissa and kudos for getting some grants and things. So I just wanted to say that. But what I was mainly here to say was that at the recent June town meeting, member Nick Priest read a statement from the Board of Selectmen where you, condemning the actions of the, the police in Minnesota and the death of George Floyd, Floyd, excuse me. And then you recognized the local events that were organized by Burlington students and residents. And I wanted to thank you for your words and your commitment to the town with respect to that. As a board, you stated that all residents should be treated equally and with dignity, and further that you're going to ensure that Burlington is a safe place to visit, to work, and to live. And that statement continued on saying that you were, you know, committed to educating yourselves, listening to the community, and reinforcing that commitment through practice and policy. So I just kind of wanted to know tonight what the board is thinking or intending as far as acting on those, those powerful words. Is there going to be an action plan? Have you thought about continued discussions, creating any of that action plan? And how, how are we going to deal with making sure that equality is, is here in Burlington? Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, may I? Thank you, sir. Sherry, thank you for, you know, coming to speak with us tonight. I know virtually can always be a little bit of a hand in the puns. I know that Paul and I spoke earlier today about trying to get together a, what we typically do are these strategic planning meetings, where we had the opportunity to kind of delve into these areas of focus. It, it's a little daunting to try and, you know, have as many conversations online as, as we do. But I believe the goal is to put that on our agenda and to begin to, you know, start to have those, those conversations. I can't say that we've had too many since town meeting, but I know that it's on top of mind for many of us.
Thank you, I would, I would encourage that, thank you.
Mr. Sagarino?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to suggest that typically on the Citizens Time is, citizens can make a statement, but we don't want to have the board really doing a lot of deliberating on this. So I think if it's something that the board wishes to address, that we could add it on to a future agenda item and then have a more formal discussion on it. Like I said, from my experience on Citizen Time is typically we want to allow the citizens to speak, have what they say. But we want to sort of minimize the, the back and forth with the board, just in the sense that if it's something that should be an agenda item for discussion, it should sort of be on the agenda so folks know about it if they want to participate. So just wanted to point that out. Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your listening, thanks.
Thank you, Sherry, thank you very much. Appreciate the comments on that. Nick did a great job with that. The board stands behind it a hundred percent, so I just want to say thank you. Okay. Paul, we need to adjourn this meeting, or?
Yes. Please allow me, I'm going to read a, a motion. And then if, if one of the board members can make it theirs, just so that we get all the legalities of it correct. So I'll read it, one of you guys can take that motion. And then what I believe is going to happen is while we're doing this, Betty will be sending you guys an invitation to a new meeting. So look for that in your email. So once we end this meeting, look for that in your email, and we'll, we'll jump back in there. And it, this, this should be a relatively quick one. But the motion that we need is as follows. I move that the Board of Selectmen convene to executive session with forty eight hours having been given in order to discuss strategy with respect to all collective bargaining units and employee groups.
in order to discuss strategy, uh, with respect to all collective bargaining units and employee groups, uh, with respect to union contracts, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, uh, with the Board of Selectmen adjourning from executive session and not reconvening in open section as is authorized by General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One B four. So that's the, the legal motion that we need.
Chairman, do I have a motion?
I have motion.
Motion by Bob, seconded by Mike, okay. Roll call vote, Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Randy, yes. Okay, five zeros, are we ready to, uh, go into executive session?
And not returned at one second.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.